sings upon us and may we experience your divine touch and love in our hearts today and forevermore, amen.
Deputy registrar, can you please call the witness?
Mr. Witness, for continuation of your testimony for this commission of inquiry into local government councils and related matters, may I remind you that you are still under oath.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I hand over the witness to you.
Mr. Ture, good morning.
Good morning.
Have a good morning.
I'll have a good morning.
I hope you had your breakfast.
Yes.
Thank you. Council, can you proceed please?
Good morning, Madam Chairperson and Honorable Commissioners and everyone present. Zatule, it is good to have you again.
Thank you.
We will discuss the 2019 audit report from the National Audit Office.
Yes.
And then we will go to some issues regarding the procurement reviews.
Okay.
And then we will probably end with the system audits findings for 2021.
Thank you.
Do you follow?
Yes.
Yeah, so we have discussed, we're discussing the issue regarding the weak governance in 2019.
Yes.
You came in 2019, is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
So basically, some of the findings I had told you were substantially similar to the 2021 system audit.
I agree with you.
You agree with that?
Yes.
And so that it shows that not only do you have these problems afresh in 2021 or from 2021 upwards, but then these are problems that had really started way back in 2019 when you were there, but perhaps much more earlier than that, but for the purpose of the audit since 2019.
Yes.
So on page 23 of the National Audit Report, it has stated that, for example, I will read for you
Okay.
That we reviewed the governance function and noted that the following weaknesses. There was no evidence that the development committee was required by the local, as required was established. The finance and contracts subcommittee are both set up but both headed by the same person. The contracts committee did not have any other member other than the chairperson. There is also no evidence that the subcommittee made regularly. The organogram establishment that the internal auditor reports to the chairman is really also not correct. However, there is no audit committee set up at the general council to facilitate that process. So there are implications for that, that weak governance would imply that the operations of the council will fall almost exclusively in the hands of the executive. This may result in poor or no oversight and hence poor internal control. Was that the reality on the ground in 2019?
Yes, at that time.
At that time?
Yes.
What did you do afterwards?
Yeah, we tried to strengthen the committees. The committees were there, but they were not functional as in accordance with the local government acts as they have stated.
But we have seen that even when you, when you have tried, as you have said, to strengthen the committees, but things remain the same.
Okay, but there were some improvements, but they were not, when I took over, most of them were very dumb and they were not having meetings.
Yes.
And there were no proper filing system of their activities.
Yes.
So I have to open files for them and also encourage them to meeting from time to time. It's true that the meetings are not regular. Like I stated before, we only meet occasionally when they need arise.
We have also seen that there is no evidence of that as well, when you have tried to show us minutes of meetings, which were in fact reports and not really minutes of meetings.
Okay.
Not okay, please.
I agree.
Agree or disagree?
Yes, I agree.
So now, who did you take over from in 2019?
I took over from Mr. Jeter, Mr. Laman Jeter.
When you took over from him, was there an internal audit department?
Yes, there was an internal auditor.
Yes.
Yes.
The name?
Modibo Kuruma.
Modibo Kuruma?
Yes.
And when you were there, was that Modibo Kuruma still in Basie Eleksoasan internal auditor?
Yeah, up to 2020, 2021, 2020.
And then what happened?
Yeah, in 2020, in January, the letter should be, I checked for the copy, but there should be a copy in the minister's file.
So why was the Department of Internal Audit not really functional?
It was not functional because when I took over, I found this Mr. Kuruma there. Then I challenged him, I told him that, well, since I came, I have not seen any internal audit report from your office. So I challenged him, I wrote to him, I said, I think you should conduct a pre-audit exercise because I have not seen any documents going through your office or whatever. So I want you to conduct an audit exercise.
Was that done?
It was not done. What really happened was, he even left the office for, since he got that letter, he left the office from January up to February, March, then we stopped the salary, then he came back and told me clearly that he cannot do the job. So that was what prompted us to redeploy Fat Mara MSAO in 2021.
And even with the redeployment, you still disregarded that office?
I don't really disregard it, because I knew very well, when I scout among the files, she was the only one at least who has some little.
She had been there, she was sent on training, she came back.
Yes.
But then you do not really make sure that all documentation of financial accounts necessary to pass through her office were actually really following due process. That was not the case, that was not the norm in Basie, even with the, with the fact that you have employed, and someone was employed as the internal auditor at the time.
Yes, you are right.
On page 26, no balance sheet. It says during the audit, the council prepared and submitted a submitted income and expenditure statement, but there was no balance sheet submitted for the period under review and no reason was given for the non-submission. Why is that?
Yeah, that may be the results of lack of reconciliation.
What is the, what is the importance of having a balance sheet?
It will help you to have an updated information about.
About?
The income and expenditure.
And so why did you not make sure that this was the case?
Well, like I said, we've been battling with the issue of the capacity of the finance director has not been able to.
That has nothing to do with capacity.
That has.
People were occupying the offices, so they have to give reports. They have to prepare the necessary documentation to, to, to help or assist or provide adequate information as to the financial status of the area council.
Yeah, those things should be provided.
Yes, so they were not provided. So I am now showing you.
Yes.
Why it was easier.
Yes.
For the Director of Finance, Laman Suso, to have his way out, to control the accounts of the area council the, the way he wants to and misuse and mismanage the funds of council. He found a broken system. That is what we have seen in 2019, he was not present, was he present in 2019?
No, he was not.
So he found a broken system and capitalized on it. Would that be a fair statement? Will that be a fair statement?
Maybe a weak system.
A weak system is a broken system.
Oh, well, okay.
You cannot have a weak system that is not broken, that is not broken. If it is weak, it is broken. That is the idea.
Even if it is weak, maybe the bones are loose, but when it is totally broken, then there is no.
You can speak louder.
I said, when it is weak, there are still some binding, that, you know, there are rooms for improvement. And definitely, that was why the ministry thought that the former director who was there needs some capacity, so he need to go and read. So that was what prompted them to bring in another new finance director, hoping that when they bring a new finance, new finance director, things will be better than ever before, but that.
Another prevailing problem on page 27.
Yes.
Is that it was found that the council did not prepare and maintain controlled accounts for its transactions with debtors and creditors for the period under review. No reason was advanced for the non-preparation.
You are right.
Yes, but now, why was that the case as well? Similarly, on page 28, no monthly abstract books. These are all same issues.
Yes.
It goes to the root of the accounts, the financial statements being prepared to know the status of the area council. No monthly abstract books prepared.
Yes.
So section 906 of the Financial Accountant Manual states that each council should maintain separate abstract books for revenue and expenditure. The abstract book is to be posted at the end of the month by the senior clerk to analyze the transactions in the cash book prior to being posted to general ledger.
Yes, it's correct, but.
Why is that important?
It's very, very important.
Why?
Because it will, it will address us with the updated information about our financial transactions.
All right.
Yes. What I'm saying is that, I'm not trying to shift the blame.
Yes.
I'm, I'm the head of the institution and I'll be responsible, but I want to believe that they also have their TORs and.
Who, who is they?
The finance department.
They have that TOR?
Yeah, that, it is part of their mandate.
Okay.
Yes, it is part of their mandate to make sure that the books of accounts are all been updated.
Are all been updated?
Yes.
And so.
As expected.
And so if they fail to do that?
They should be bringing to book.
They should?
They bring to book accordingly, by the CEO.
And who was the CEO at the time?
I was the CEO at that time.
Did you bring them to book?
No.
And so why are you telling us what they did?
Follow-ups, follow-ups we are done, but do not aware.
You were, you were employed to do follow-ups, does that?
It's, it's part of my mandate to monitor and supervise.
Part of, naturally?
Yes.
So then, that's why you stop?
That's where I stop.
That's where your mandate stops?
Yes, but I, yes.
Yes, what?
That's where my mandate stopped.
Just to follow up, follow up?
Not follow up, to monitor and supervise.
Did you supervise?
Yes, I supervise.
How did you supervise that?
This lack of, their lack of being able to produce these books of accounts as expected.
Let me read to you what the financial manual states.
Yes.
202, the Chief Executive Officer. It says the CEO shall be appointed by the Local Government Service Commission, of course.
Yes.
And as the accounting officer of the council, he or she shall be, shall be responsible for the general management and supervision of the financial and accounting operations of the councils and the safeguarding of councils' assets in accordance with the relevant section laws. He is personally responsible for the due performance of the financial duties of council.
Yes.
Do you follow?
I follow, yes.
The observance by employees of council of all financial and accounting instructions issued from time to time, the proper disbursement of such money from the purchase of goods or acquisition of services for the day-to-day administration of the council, ensuring that adequate steps are taken for proper control of financial transactions under this control, the general management supervision and production of the accounts of council, any inaccuracies in the accounts so produced by him or under his authority, extracting and circulating to all finance staff, auditions of councils relating to affairs, designing and improving the form of accounting systems, issuing accounting orders. You know, you had said you, you, you are mindful of, of, of trying to appear as you are giving orders to the, to the, to the finance director. Do you recall saying that?
Yes.
Now, we have told you that you are responsible for issuing accounting orders, which are completely in line with the manual as may become necessary from time to time, approving in consultation with council, the appointment of so-and-so. And so therefore, your responsibilities are literally to be the father of the area council. When it comes to the day-to-day management of the area council, and in doing so, you are answerable to council, you are answerable to the chairman or the chairperson or the mayor, whosoever is holding whatsoever office at, at, at the time in, in question.
I quite agree with you.
Yes, so that the Director of Finance is directly under you, becomes your subordinate, and should operate based on your direction and instruction.
So.
So now, did you do that?
Yes.
How? Why are you doing that? When you don't prepare monthly abstract books, there are no monthly reconciliations. How were you executing your functions?
These assignments, these responsibilities were, were assigned to them.
Were assigned to them? And you are to make sure that they perform those responsibilities?
Yeah, exactly, I should make so.
Did you make sure they perform the responsibilities?
I have tried my best.
Did you make sure that they perform these responsibilities?
Yes, I have made so that they, because after this audit, after this audit report, the then finance director, you know, endeavored to make sure that.
These problems were happening, they were, they were persistent, they were chronic problems. It was not like the, the, the audit report highlighted these things and then you corrected these, these issues. You never corrected them. They were persistent, they were happening on a daily basis. That is why I am saying, why was that happening? Why was it a continuous problem?
This, this is what I'm saying, if it continues like how it is continuing.
Yes.
Then it means there are reasons, possibly, they are not able to do it as in accordance with the financial manual.
And so?
That was what prompted the ministry, after looking at this audit report, to advertise for the position, to request for us to advertise for the position.
Now, on page 232, no bank reconciliation performed. Why would you perform a bank reconciliation? What would be your excuse?
Well, there is no excuse, because the informations are available.
It says no bank reconciliation was performed for, for the six bank, bank accounts of the council. No reasons were advanced for the non-preparation and the implications there. Without regular reconciliations, errors from both the bank and internal records could be passed into final reports. This would affect the reliability of such financial statements. Risk is very much high and you responded by saying the importance of bank reconciliation is very key as to ensure accuracy of transactions between cash books and bank. Now, if you don't perform bank reconciliation, there is an evidence of fraudulent practices going unnoticed, and this we have discussed with the auditor. Do you know that?
Yes.
And you headed the institution from 2019 all the way to 2023 without having bank reconciliation, not even for once, one month. You have never, ever requested for a bank reconciliation, not even once. And this is supposed to be monthly, is that not the case?
It's the case, yes.
Bank reconciliation is monthly and you don't prepare bank reconciliations. You headed the institution.
Yes.
What do you have to say about that?
Yeah, this is what I'm saying, I used to do it at my own end, but what should be prepared.
You used to do what?
I said, I used to do my own reconciliation.
Your own reconciliation?
When I requested from them, they cannot produce it, I have to do my own reconciliation to know.
Give us a sample of a reconciliation you have done.
I, I will take the bank, the bank.
Sure, we don't have to really do much of the talking.
Okay.
Do you have evidence of the bank reconciliation you have done yourself?
No, I don't have it.
So why are you telling us you, you do it?
Okay, thank you, sorry for that.
No, I, I don't want you to act as if, no, you don't, if you have the evidence, prove, provide the evidence.
No, I don't have the evidence, I'll only look at it, I'll only look the, look at the, the bank statements to know compared with what is in the bank and what is paid by the, what is deposited by the collectors.
So if these problems were happening in 2019.
Yes.
And you will not prepare monthly bank reconciliation, how will you account for, given, a, 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 a correct, up-to-date, accurate financial statements or financial position of the, of the area council? How would you account for every dollarcy?
It will be impossible to account for.
Extremely impossible?
Yes.
So if someone was really stealing money from the council, council's funds, how would you know? How would you know where every dollarcy has been spent on?
Yeah, it will be difficult to know.
And this was in 2019, the same problem in 2020, no bank reconciliation in 2020, you did not. Then you have Laman Suso came, come in 2021.
Yeah, I, I can only account for.
I am just telling you whether you are seeing the sequence, why you really had the monster in 2021?
Okay.
It's because you, since you were employed, you never, ever performed your job. You would never, ever were functional in Basie Area Council, you never served them. You are receiving salaries, you are repaying salaries, you don't do your job, you don't make sure the job is being done. You never administer the area council properly.
Well, maybe it's weak, but I have done my, my, what, what I could do.
Your what you could do?
Yes.
Was never enough. Even to say whether it was enough would be really giving you credit. You haven't done even five percent of what you were supposed to do.
No, I have done, I have done my quota.
What, what was your quota? When you can't account for the, for the funds?
Yes.
How were you accounted for the funds?
The, there are people, everybody who is employed by the council has a role to play.
And they are all under you?
Yeah, they are all under me, but if they, they fail in their role.
It's your responsibility to make sure you bring this to book?
Yes.
You never did, they did that.
Yeah, but, yeah, I never did that in writing, but I've been doing the consultation and, you know, we have seen some.
The ultimate failure.
Yes.
Will lie on the people that are given responsibility.
Yes.
To manage, that is the ultimate failure.
Yes.
It starts from all the, all the directors, the CEO, you particularly, the chairperson or chairman or chair, or, or chairwoman, whatever the case is at the time, you had not managed the funds, you would never accounted for the funds, of course, how did you even escape from this? How were you not even held responsible for not giving? It's not like even you, you, you misrepresented the financial status of council, you never provided one.
No, after the audits, they were provided.
2019?
2019.
Never, 2020, never.
Okay.
No, if there is, tell me, I, I am challenging you to tell you, it was never the case.
No, bank reconciliations for 2019, 2020, they were, they were, they were prepared later after the audit because it was a requirement for them.
How can you prepare bank reconciliation, reconciliation one year after the audit report? How can you do that? Bank reconciliation is every month.
Yes.
At the end of the year, you will have to prepare a financial statement.
That is what is.
So if you don't have a bank reconciliation, how will you have a financial statement?
It will be impossible.
How will we know that the subvention funds, the revenue collected is being spent in areas and ways and means that it's supposed to be spent on? How will we know that?
It will, it will be impossible.
And you were still paid salary? All of you were paying salary?
Yes.
Your salaries will never, you will always maintain your salaries and your allowances. You will go in for meetings and demand that you be paid for if, if missed allowance on top of your salaries. How is that possible? Page 34, incomplete asset register. So you had some assets, for example, there were motorbikes being bought, BSAC 22, 26, 25, 4, 21, 2, 23, and SEB 27. They were, they'd never featured in any asset register. Why would that be the case?
At the time when they were doing the audit, those ones are not in part of the, they were not in the asset register.
Why?
They should have been there, but it was incomplete, as they have said, I quite agree with them, it was.
The lack of asset register even featured in the 2021 audit report, system audit.
Yes.
So the, the information that you will have to, you will have to have in this register would be the date of acquisition, cost of the assets, description and condition at the time, and reference numbers of the assets and their actual serial numbers and location if any. So you will have properties for the area council without having documentation to highlight what the, what the area council owes and where it is located, what the value is at the time, if it is disposed, the manner of which it has been disposed of. Do you know the risk involved in that?
There is too risky, there is, the risk is high.
Why, what, what is the risk or what are, what are the possible risks attacked?
The, the possible risk attack to read is that the council's assets may be missing and we cannot be accounted for it.
The what?
The council's assets, like the motorbikes, when they go missing.
Were there, were there any time the council assets were missing?
I could not remember.
How would you know? If any was missing, would you know?
Yeah, because these are allocated to staff.
If any was missing, will, will you know?
Yeah, we'll know it.
How will you know?
They are allocated to staffs.
They are?
They are allocated to staffs.
They are allocated to staffs?
Yes.
Do you have a list?
Yeah, we have a list of those.
You don't have a list?
It's not, it's not in the.
You don't have a list, don't say things that are not true.
No, I will not say anything that.
Now, can you produce the list?
The list of those.
All the assets?
Yeah, we, we have recently, we have recently submitted, okay, 2021, that is not there. We have just recently submitted.
2019?
All, all have been corrected and we've submitted an asset register.
The, the, the one you have submitted?
Yes.
Were these not land properties or?
No, those are land, I mean, the asset register was submitted to the investigators.
To the investigators?
Yes.
Now, why would it now be captured in the system audit that there was no asset register?
That was 2019.
2021 as well?
2021.
Throughout?
There was, but they say it's incomplete.
Incomplete?
Yes.
Then there is none. In fact, what you have showed us yesterday, I had told you that it's not an asset register, but it's a list of assets. It does not give us any adequate information regarding those assets.
I quite agree with you.
Exactly.
Yes.
So, so again, page 235, some key documents not being prepared. Now, it has been asserted by the auditor that you don't have an IT policy manual, that will be true?
Yes.
A training policy?
There is no training policy.
Why, why, why would you not have a training policy?
We didn't have a training policy, but an IT policy was.
Why will you not have a training policy?
There should be a training.
There should be.
Yes.
Procurement plan?
Yeah, procurement, procurement plan at that time was not available, but.
Their procurement plan was not available at any given time?
I used to prepare the procurement plans.
You see, you have started saying things that are not correct.
No, because he used to bring these plans to me and I advise him to submit it to the.
You don't have a procurement plan.
Ah, okay.
Now show me a procurement plan.
I think it should be submitted by.
No, it's not, I am asking you as a CEO, did you submit it?
The, the procurement officer said he has submitted all these files.
Did you submit procurement plan?
No, I did not submit it, but it was submitted by the procurement.
Your office, you would have records of documents filed before you, given to you. You must have records of this. Now, I am asking as a CEO, where do you have records of procurement plans being given to you? Since 2019, do you have records of that?
Not in 2019.
2020?
2020, yes.
You have a program for 2020?
He started preparing the procurement plan in 2020.
You don't have a program for 2020, it has featured in the, in the procurement reviews, we will get, get there. You don't have a program plan for 2020.
I agree with you.
You don't have a program plan for 2021 as well?
Okay.
Do you agree or do you disagree?
I agree.
Now, the database of procurement made for the period, do you have that? Do you have an updated database of procurements being made?
No.
You don't, why?
It should have been there.
So why would you not have them? Why did you not have them?
Due to poor, proper recording system.
Poor, proper?
Proper recording system.
Recording system?
Yes.
Now, GTRs were used to recover or make tax deductions and, and, and personal loans deductions in 2019. What can you tell us about that? Were you aware of that?
Yes, because at that time, the finance director thought that, you know, it's a revenue that is coming in, but the auditor spoke to him that, that is not revenue.
Please, please speak louder.
Yeah, he thought that the loans recovery is a revenue coming into the council, but they proved it to him that it's not a recovery to the council, so it's not a revenue to the council. So you should not use GTR, GTR is only used for revenues that are coming into the council.
Did, did you stop that at the time?
Yeah, I believe it has been stopped.
It has been stopped?
Yes.
So on page 38, it says there were license, license areas. It says our review of the license, license assessment and receipt record revealed outstanding license areas of 138,500 dollarses. How do you know that this was the amount owed to the area council?
At that time, when the, you know, we have a license in a register.
Yes.
So they went through that those who have paid and that those who have not paid.
Yes.
But if the fee, the fee go, is at that time, that's where the liability. But if the figure, the figure, uh, is as at that time, those were the liabilities.
But what were they?
Those were the liabilities.
But then, you don't have, um, proper accounting being done, how would you know that, that these figures are correct, how would anyone know that they are correct?
Uh, the licensing manager keeps the records of, uh, the licensing that are correct.
Did you do, do, do any reconciliation, any, um, financial statements to ascertain these figures?
No, I will only call him, he will come with this book, we look at, uh, those who have paid and those who have not paid.
Not paid and, and that's it?
And that's it, and we make a follow up on that, those who have not yet paid.
So in, yes.
Um, Mr. Mr. Ture, um.
Yes.
On the issue of license.
Yes.
Do the council issue license to institutions that, um, are supposed to be issued with licenses?
Yes, we call them, we call it a trade licensing.
Yes, do you issue them with the license that they will hang in their business?
Yeah, when they are, when they pay, we give them a certificate.
You give them certificates, indicating that that's the license for.
They, they, they have paid that, that particular year licensing, yes, banks and all other institutions.
So you issue them regularly?
Regularly, yes, they, 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 once they, they pay, they will, if you don't give to them, they will make a follow up.
But that is not what your finance director said, when he came here.
These finance, these foreign exchange bureaus, banks and all other things, I could remember Vista Bank have been following and we give it.
So you will have, you will have duplicates of those license at your office, right?
It should be with the, it should be with the licensing manager.
Yes, can, can you provide us with the licenses that you have issued over the period? Or data showing that this number of licenses were issued, because I know if you issue the license, you will record this, um. You will record it for the purposes of making reference.
Okay.
Now you, to summarize it, provide us with the data indicating how much, how many licenses you have issued over the period.
Okay.
Covering the, the eighteenth of May to January twenty twenty three.
Eighteenth May twenty?
Gen-, um, eighteenth May. Twenty eighteen?
Twenty eighteen.
To January twenty twenty three.
Twenty twenty three, okay, thank you.
Now, let us briefly discuss, uh, the performance review for twenty nineteen, you, you know this Sara Bojo Lumo?
Yes, I know Sara Bojo Lumo.
What is the, what is the current?
Are you dealing with the systems audit?
We are dealing with the twenty nineteen, at, at the tail end.
Yes.
Then we will go, um, to procurement and then go to the system audit.
Okay.
Yeah, the Sara Bojo Lumo.
Yes, I know.
What, what is the state of the Sara Bojo Lumo?
Uh, at the time of the audit, the, the state of the, the conditions there were not satisfactory.
How about now?
At least, uh, they talked about the toilets, now we are able to, uh, clean all the toilets and we provide.
So let me tell you the problems.
We provide them with, uh, water.
Let me tell you the process, the Lumo didn't have a water supply facility, do you have it now?
No, we have it now, yes.
What, what do you have there now?
Uh, we connect the, the, there is a borehole that was provided by Water Resources for the communities. So we connect, uh, to that borehole and, uh, we have, we provide.
Why, why didn't you dig them a borehole?
Uh, we didn't have the capacity.
You didn't have the capacity?
Yes.
You didn't have the funds?
We didn't have the funds.
But you are collecting revenue from the same people?
Yes.
So where, 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 where is the money going to?
This is why operation we, you know.
Your?
This is why operation, we give them a feeder road.
Your operations?
We give them a feeder road.
You, you made them a feeder road?
We gave them a feeder road, Sara Bojo, Sara Manson, yes.
I am asking for, um, specifically about the borehole, why would there not be a borehole?
We are, we are not able to.
Why, there are no funds?
Uh, that specifically for, for, for that borehole.
But if, if you spend four million just for one office in your department, where, where, where will you have the money to?
Frankly, we should provide them.
You spend four million just for the finance director's office, four million dollars more.
It includes, uh, the salaries of all the staffs and other.
Salaries is just one, one million or so.
Okay.
Where is outstanding three million dollars, where, where, where is it going to? You could dig a borehole for how much, how much would it cost you to dig a borehole? Your office alone as well, two point something million, about three million dollarses.
Uh, so, um, council, the, um, the issue of the salary.
Yes.
Which you are referring to is global, not specific, as in what he is referring to. Because he is referring that that four million takes, uh, into consideration the staff under the finance department. So it cannot be one million, the one million you are referring him to is global, because yesterday he has given us the breakdown of. The salary, which is eight hundred and something thousand, so it is even less than one million. I just said.
Do you understand?
Yes, I understand, yes.
Do you agree with that?
I agree with that, yes.
So again, if you agree with that, then four million being spent on the office of the finance director.
Yes. Yeah, I quite agree.
The salaries will even, um, be up to one million dollarses.
I quite agree.
As the chairman, chairperson has already outlined.
I quite agree, Sara Bojo, we should have given them something more than.
Misplaced priorities, you are, you are collecting revenue from, from the people of Basay and put it, and spending it primarily. On, um, your own needs, your own personal needs in your offices, in the, in the comfort of your offices, and then you forget the, the, the people of Basay. It says also, there is no designated dump site and refused. Yes, there is no designated dump site, is that, is that the case?
No, we have it now, we have.
When, since when?
After the audit.
After the audit?
Yes, we have cleaners there.
There is no duty station at the Lumo for the staff, do you have it now?
No, we just still, we still don't have it.
Why?
We don't have it.
The collectors also raised concerns with some vendors refusing payments to collectors without apparent identification, that's a problem.
It's a big problem, yes, still now there is no, uh, uniforms given to collectors.
The toilets as well?
The toilets, we have taken care of them.
You are taking care of them?
Yes, we have provided them with water and they are clean and we have, uh, we have cleaners at the, at the.
There's only one toilet?
No, there is not only one toilet, we have one, one, we have, uh, about four at the, the other, when you enter the Lumo. And another, uh, six at the, at the, at the extreme end, but they are all provided with water.
Mister, Mister Ture, this is not what the collectors have given as evidence in this commission.
About, about.
Can you provide us with evidence of what you are saying?
About the Lumo?
Yes.
The toilets at the Lumo?
Yes, can you provide us with evidence?
Yes, unless they go there and, and, and take photos of the, of the toilets, yes, okay.
You, you are the CEO.
Yes, I will, I will.
Even though you are on leave, it's possible that you can.
Yes, I will, I will, I will, I will call them.
So please provide us with evidence, so that we will be able to check whether what the collectors said, yes, is true or not. Thank you.
Mr. Ture?
Yes.
Let me show you the audit report and there's a picture attached to it regarding the toilet at, at Sara Bo- Bojo. You can also make it, um, available so that the, the camera can see it?
Okay.
That was when you were CEO as well?
Yes.
Do you understand that?
Yes, I understand.
Can I have it?
Okay.
What, what, what do you have to say about that, that, that situation?
It was.
The state of the toilet?
It was very appalling.
It was very?
Very appalling situation, very bad indeed.
Very bad?
Yes.
How many Lumos do you have in your, in your jurisdiction?
We have about eight, eight, eight Lumos.
About?
About eight Lumos.
Were they all, all in this state?
No.
No?
The conditions have changed.
No, in twenty nineteen, because have changed, we, we have, we see no evidence of that.
Okay.
I'm just asking you, were they all in this, in this state at the time?
They are, they are, no.
They were not all this at the time?
Yes.
Mister Ture?
Yes.
Lumos were never taken care of, you never, apart from going to collect revenue, you, you never focus on this, on this Lumos? Do you?
No, we focus on them.
But tell me, tell me what development you have done?
These toilets were built, but they were not taken care of.
They were?
They, they were built and they were not taken care of, but when the audit, after the audit report, we now provide them with, uh, we clean them and we provide them with water.
Just clean them, you can clean, you can, did you renovate them?
No, the, the conditions are okay, they are all tiled and.
That's not correct, the conditions were not good, I have shown you the picture.
What I mean?
No, I have shown you the picture.
Okay.
The conditions were not good, it's not like they were tiled, they were all in good, um, condition, it was not about it being dirty.
No, it was, they were dirty.
I am not saying, I'm not saying they were, it was not just about it being dirty, but the fact that it was really in a very bad condition. You needed, you needed to renovate the place. So you did not do that, so for four million dollarses, finance department, I have shown you the, 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 the breakdown. Transportation alone, you've spent one million dollarses, I wonder on what? For finance department, you can build three boreholes with one million dollarses, can't you?
Yes.
So why was, was, was it difficult to even build a borehole? Why one million dollars can, can renovate the toilets, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Why, why was it difficult to do that? The, the chairman's office, more than two million dollarses, almost three million dollarses in twenty nineteen. For salaries and allowances, one million five hundred, five hundred and ten thousand dollarses, how many people do you pay under the chairman's office? Or in the, in the chairman's office, how many staff?
The chairman and the counselors.
And the counselors?
Yes.
How about the, the, the transportation, does, does it, does it include all the, the staff?
No.
Do you give all of them transportation?
Uh.
Do you give the counselors as well transportation?
No.
Why would the amount be eight hundred forty five thousand dollarses? That is what I don't understand.
Uh, Mister Ture, do you consider the counselors, um, as staff under the chairman's office?
No, because they are.
But you just mentioned that, you said.
No, they are, they are given, they are given allowances, there is no.
He is asking you the number of staff under the chairman's office.
No, there is no staff on the chairman's office, just reason.
So please let's answer the question, give correct answers.
All right, thank you, sorry for that, all right.
What would be on the health and sanitation? Do you have a, do you have a unit for, for health?
No, we don't have, they are all under the, uh.
Because I see a column on the health and sanitation and the salaries for that is preferential for the six thousand two hundred eighty nine dollarses, what would that be?
They are under the directive of planning.
That, that should have planning, but we also have salaries for, 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 for the planning and development?
Yeah, all those people are under him.
Do you have people, do you have officers in relation to health?
With the cleaning service.
So they, they are the health and sanitation?
Yes.
So they are not, are they not under the, under the planning and development?
They are under planning and development.
Why, why do you have it separate? Why is that separate?
We should, this would be, this would be all, they are all under planning and direct, planning and development.
They are all under?
Planning and development.
Why is it separate?
Well, I don't know.
Now, on page eighteen, you have, um, the notes on development projects for twenty nineteen.
Yes.
So on a, on a that, um, column, you have youth development project slash women, six thousand dollarses, what you spent on that? Was that, was that a donation?
Yeah, the youths, when they have activities, they write to council and council will, uh.
Please speak louder.
As a youths and women, when they have activities, they write to the council through the youth rep or the women rep, then will fund those activities.
So for sports development, two hundred and four thousand five hundred ninety three dollarses?
Yes.
For twenty nineteen, that's what, what you have spent?
Yes.
Community water system, what is that?
Yes.
What is that?
Providing the communities with water system.
You have the amount spent is one thousand dollarses, what do you spend it on?
Uh.
One thousand dollarses?
Suddenly before I took over, they, they, they were using for, they were paying for some tap dates within, within Basay. Before they, they finally closed them, but when I went, I found that they have already closed them. But this, this, uh, audit report is from January, uh, twenty nineteen to December, twenty nineteen, yes.
So how about for Norway water and air, air, air city bills?
Yes, that is for the street lights.
For the street lights?
Yes, I will be lost for that.
Car park maintenance?
Yes, the garage.
The garage?
Yes.
Gumworks?
Gum?
Gumworks.
Gumworks, that is the ten percent contribution to Gumworks, because I have found, I, I inherited, uh, seven incomplete projects. And those projects were, uh, funded by Gumworks with a ten percent contribution from the council.
Road maintenance, do you connect road maintenance?
Yes, we have built the roads.
Have you finished paying the ten percent for those projects, are they concluded?
Uh, no.
You said you, you inherited how many projects?
Seven, seven projects.
So can we, can you provide us with the evidence?
The list of the projects, and their cost?
Yes. Yes, and their cost?
Yes, I will do that.
And please find out whether you have, um, completed paying the ten percent that you are supposed to pay to Gumworks for all of those projects.
Thank you.
So, um. For soccerway, wh- wh- were you digging any soccerway?
Uh, no.
None?
We were, we have soccerways there.
Yes.
But they are normally drained.
They're normally?
They, when, when they are full, we drain them.
Now, how often will you, will you do that in the, in the year?
Well, like that of the market, uh, is, is, I can say almost every two to three months.
And then you pay how much for one, um, draining?
Uh, I cannot remember exactly, but now it's like three thousand two hundred.
But the amount you've had for twenty nineteen is you have spent for soccerways. Two hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollarses, would, would, would that really be, be reasonable amount?
Uh.
For, for one year?
For one year.
Yes.
Yeah, because, uh, we have it at the, we have it at the market, we have soccerways, not one, we have it at the market and we have it at the council. And at, uh, at, at, at the CEO's quarters as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, so basically, in twenty nineteen, what developments can you recall? That, 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 that took place in, in Basay area council?
Well, in twenty nineteen, the, the projects that are inherited, those are the ones we, we work on to complete them.
So the amount spent on, on that, on that development column is five million dollarses?
Yes.
Entire?
I also found out that the council have constructed, uh, wholly and solely by themselves, uh, a dose, uh, a dump site.
They have what?
A dump site, a dump site.
Yes, yes.
Yes, that was funded by the council, apart from the, the saving Gumworks projects. That I have also inherited, that they have done the, the dump site in twenty nineteen, yes.
Now, let's briefly discuss the, the, the compliance review for the year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
Okay.
How many of you were in the counters committee?
Council, I have, just have one question.
Yes, yes.
Before we close this, um, Mister Ture?
Yes.
The, um, the twenty twenty, the twenty nineteen audit report at Pith seventeen. Talks about the use of GTAs.
Yes.
I believe the council has asked you questions and, um, the audit highlighted, um, serial numbers, several of them.
Yes.
And has asked that, um, these, um, serial numbers should be audited. Because they cannot find these entries in the cashbook. Please take a moment.
Okay.
And set light on that. Deputy Director? Did you do any reconciliation between the GTAs and the cashbook in order to know why this happened?
Yeah, these ones were, like I said, they were used by the finance department when people pay their, their loans. when people paid their, their loans. Uh, because they, according to them, they believe that those loans repayment were revenues coming to the council. When auditors prove to them that these are not incomes to the council, they are not revenue to the council. So therefore you should not use the G T R.
Did you give a management response to that effect?
Uh, these were errors that happened during the postings as we were operating on manual system. It's really difficult, but the comment of the ifme system, such errors will not happen.
So what you are telling us is different from what your response is to the auditors, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So you are not, you are not giving us the...
No, this is, based on this receipts, uh, numbers, uh, there were errors because they were not, they were not supposed to be used for...
Mr. Ture, the response you gave?
Yes.
You said you were able to do reconciliation because you were giving these receipts to the staff that has, that have taken loans from the council.
Yes.
Right? But that is not your management response.
Yeah, what I'm trying to explain is giving them the receipts was an error.
Is that, is that different from what you, what the management response is? What you told me, is it different from the management response?
No, it's, yes, it's different.
Yes, and who wrote the management response?
I wrote the management response.
Thank you. Council, give me a proceed.
Yes, now, um, the twenty...
Okay, I was referring to the recommendation by the auditors before the management response. Yes.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, uh, the compliance review, G P A.
Yes.
But, but before I proceed, what was the composition of your contrast committee members in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one?
Uh, the CEO, the finance director.
Finance director?
Procurement officer and the planner engineer.
And?
The planner and engineer.
Was the chairman attending the contrast committee meeting?
Chairman, uh, when they need arise, we invite him there.
The chairman was attending the contrast committee meetings?
Yeah, this is what I'm saying, when they need arise, we invite him.
There was nothing like when they need arises, when, when, when will they need arise, like?
And, and, sorry, contrast committee, contrast committee, uh, I think Honorable Senor Canada is also part of it.
Honorable Sen- Senor Canada?
Senor Canada, yes, was part of the contrast committee, yes.
Now let's go back.
Yes.
Was the chairman attending the contrast committee meetings?
Yeah, he was attending the contrast committee meeting.
Why was that?
As I said, we invite, we used to invite him there.
Why will you invite him?
Because we believe that he's the head of the institution. Like, uh, Mister, sorry, Commissioner, uh, John have said,
Yes.
which it was wrong, he should not have attended it because he cannot be the judge and the juror at the same time. He should supervise us and give us directions. So if he is there, it will be very difficult for us to, for, for him to, uh...
Did you write to invite him?
No.
Not at the time, did you write to, to formally invite him?
No.
Did you formally appoint the, the members of the contrast committee?
It was later that we appointed them, they have their appointment letters.
But in twenty twenty, did you appoint them formally?
No, we didn't.
Why, why was that the case?
It was after, uh, when these recommendations were made, then we appoint the...
So, so when I told you earlier?
Yes.
I think, yeah, that was yesterday or, or last week?
Yes.
That the decisions made by, in your meetings were influenced by the chairman in some instances?
Yes, in some instances.
Exactly.
Okay.
So would that not be a conflict of interest when you have the chairman attending your contrast committee meetings?
Yes, I agree.
Do you have minutes of meetings of the contrast committee in, in twenty twenty?
They are all in the procurement file.
Do you have minutes of meetings?
Yes, we have minutes of meetings.
In twenty twenty?
In twenty twenty, yes.
You don't have minutes of meetings in twenty twenty? So, where are they?
They are supposed to be sub- uh, submitted by the procurement officer.
They are supposed to be submitted?
Yes.
Now, now they are not submitted, do you have them?
Unless I find it from him. Because he is the custodian of all the meetings. I, I assign the responsibility to him.
Minutes have, were not been taken in twenty twenty, that is the fact?
Alright.
Alright, what? Do you disagree with that?
Yeah, because, uh, we've been meeting under John as the secretary, the, the procurement officer as the secretary have been taking minutes. Maybe there was no filing, but he has been taking minutes.
If there are no evidence of minutes, there are no, no minutes?
Yes, I will agree with you, if there are no evidence, but he has been taking minutes.
There is no evidence, do you have any?
No, I don't have it.
So that's it. So in twenty twenty, you had the records in relation to the procurement, page seven.
Yes.
The total procurement proceedings and their values for the year twenty, twenty first December twenty twenty. You have had no open international or national tender, why is that?
In twenty twenty?
Yes.
Yes.
Why?
Uh, because, uh, I don't think we have any projects that will want us to have, uh, an international tender.
No.
But there should be an open tender.
No open tender?
Yes.
Let me say open tender, why, why was there no?
We don't, we don't have any open tender.
Why?
It was, it should be, it was correct that we should have it.
You have one thousand two hundred and fifty-one single source transactions. And you, you decided to single source, source, source all of these transactions. The value is seven point nine million dollars. Why would you commit, um, council funds to non-competition form of procurement?
It was not proper, it was not correct.
Why did you do that? This was in twenty twenty, and I had told you that when Lamintuso came, this was what he found on the ground. It was easy for him, he just walk in and he drew five hundred thousand, three point five million dollars and just walk away. Because you had a broken system. You had one thousand two hundred and fifty-four transactions when, when, when it comes to procurement. The entire value is twelve million three hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars for the products. You decided to just give contracts to whoever you want to give contracts to. In all these thousand-plus transactions, you as a CEO, you allow that to happen in the area council? I am waiting for your response.
Yes.
Why would you allow that?
Well, we believe at that time that those, uh, we use the single source.
No.
It was, it was, it was a wrong procurement method.
No, single source was just, is just the language that the, that the procurement experts would have to use, meaning you only deal with one individual, it is a less competitive form of business. The idea is, in this, we will say, you were doing casual business for kickbacks.
No.
That was what was happening.
I will not agree to that.
Then why would you not put it up, uh, uh, for, for, for competition?
Well, at our, at our end there, we...
No, no, why would you not then invite competition?
No, we are not doing that, we'll only request for quotations from, uh...
You don't request for quotations?
No, we were requesting for quotations.
No, you were not requesting for quotations. You were not doing anything apart from just, um, giving away contracts to individuals you want to give away contracts to, and that was it. That was why you, there was no pre-qualification done with respect to suppliers and contractors, no pre-qualification done. You do give contracts at will. No wonder the chair, chairman has to be present in your meetings because he had to decide as well who the contract should be given to. Respond please.
Yes, I have already responded, I said yes, I agree with you.
Now, in twenty twenty-one, the same problem. Eight hundred and eighty-eight transactions. In fact, you know why I, this figure could even be higher than, than, than what is stated, you know why? Because you don't have records in, in the procurement unit. The filing system is not adequate, is that not, is that not the case?
That is the case.
Exactly. So whereas the, the, the review will say you have eight hundred and eighty-eight transactions, you might have, you may have way higher number than this, but it's what they can find.
Yes.
It is so bad that they can never ever know what has, um, transpired in Basse area council. Eight hundred and eighty-eight transactions for single sourcing, altogether eight hundred and ninety-five, um, procurement transactions, seven million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars, thirteen products spent in twenty twenty-one. Why was, why were you not following the G P A, uh, regulations?
Well, we should have followed it.
I know.
Yes, but we didn't follow it.
But why? But what was the problem?
Well, there was no problem.
So you decided at will, not, not to follow?
No, because we thought that the single sourcing, uh, was the right procedure.
What is single sourcing?
That is, we don't look for competitors.
You, you what?
We don't look for competitors.
You don't look for competitors?
Yes.
So, so there is no value for money?
Well, there is value for money.
When they say the bottle of water is costing one thousand dollars, you just go for it?
Yes.
And, 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 and that's, that's how it goes? Will you buy this bottle of water for, for one thousand dollars?
No.
But if you don't have competition, if you don't do ma- market surveys, how would you know what the price is at the time?
Yeah, there, there will be no competition.
But you know these things, it's not like you don't know these things. You as a CEO, you are aware of what I am telling you.
Yeah, very well.
It's not like you don't know.
Very well, yes.
You told us your qualification cannot be questioned.
Yes.
So why did you intentionally do what you are doing? Why did you flout the rules?
It was not intentional.
It was intentional.
It was, okay.
No, no, you don't say, okay.
It was not intentional.
You can deny as much as you want, you have the right to say, no, please listen to me.
It, it is, it was not intentional. And I cannot convince you that it was not intentional, so I have to say yes.
No, you don't have to say yes. Remember, whatever you say here, what will, what, what will bind you? I am not telling you to lie, but where you feel you have an explanation, just say it. And I don't have to agree with you as well. The ultimate decision lies with the commissioners, not me.
But, but I said...
No, no, I want you to understand, just listen to me.
Alright.
Understand this basic rule.
I understand it, I understood it.
I will deny as much as I feel is the right thing to do or agree with you in circumstances I feel I should agree with you. You too, you hold your position if you feel that is the right thing to do, but admit as well, be honorable to admit when they, when you think you should admit. The, and the ultimate, um, decision lies with the commissioners. So I expect you to admit if you are to admit, to deny, if you are to deny, and we will dispose it.
And I think I've been admitting, then it is right.
Exactly.
Okay, in this particular sense, I, what I was trying to explain?
Yes.
We use single sourcing as, uh, at that time?
Yes.
Uh, uh, we, we believe that was the right procurement procedure.
No, why would you believe that was, that was the right procurement procedure? Do, do you not know that, about the G P A regulation?
We know about it, we should also know that there should be competition.
Exactly, what are you telling me, you believe that was the right thing to do?
Yeah.
Even with that, it has to be discussed by the contrast committee, you have to seek approval, there is, there is a procedure for that.
You are right.
You don't even follow the procedure.
You are right.
Even regardless of following procedure, still, you cannot be dealing with pre, um, with, with, with suppliers without doing pre-qualification of suppliers and registration.
Yes, it is.
But you still go ahead and award contracts at will. So why will you now convince anyone that it is not intentional? Tell me.
It was not...
How will you, how will you convince?
It was not intentional.
But how will you convince, what, what would be your convincing? Your, your, your convincing card?
I've, I've told you, at that time?
Yes.
We, we requested for quotations, not, we don't advertise it, we just, uh, ask the vendors to send in their different quotations.
Now?
Yes.
On page thirteen, it says states the functions of the contrast committee. The findings are, there is, there is evidence that the PO has established a contrast committee in accordance with G P A Act. They are saying, they are giving you credit, they are saying that you had established a contrast committee, was that true?
Yes.
Where is the evidence?
The members and they were given letters.
In twenty twenty? You have already told me in twenty twenty? Wait, wait a minute.
Okay, okay.
You have already told me in twenty twenty, you did not give, give them formal appointment?
Yes.
So they were wrong in saying that you, you, you established the committee in accordance with the law?
They found the members there, and they interviewed them.
Go ahead.
They found the members on the ground and they interviewed them, and they agreed, they, they, uh, confessed that they are part of the...
But these are the members that you ordinarily call to discuss how you're going to spend the funds of councils, and you called them the contrast committee, did you appoint them?
No, we didn't appoint them, it was later that they were, they were appointed.
You think I can just walk, um, and, and just, um, say I am now the CEO of a city council?
No.
I have to be appointed?
You have to be appointed, yes.
Yes, where they appointed?
They were not.
So wa- was there a contrast committee meeting as per the laws?
No, one of the conditions were not fulfilled.
One of the, the conclusions was not fulfilled, which is?
Therefore it was uncompleted.
Which is?
It cannot be completed, yes. Which is the appointment letters.
That is why they only have three members, you have named about five members of the contrast committee, committee. They said on page fourteen?
Yes.
Usman Ture, the chief executive officer?
Yes.
Lamintuso, director of finance?
Yes.
And Mr. John, procurement officer. There are only three names that, that, that they have mentioned in the report as being or as constituting the contrast committee.
Well, I don't know, twenty twenty, Senor Canada was part of the contra committee, contrast committee, Senor Canada, Honorable Senor Canada.
No, you have, you have given us the name, you have even told us the chairperson who would attend the meetings.
Yes.
But all these names were, were omitted. Now?
Yes.
Did you have a disposal? Did you conduct any disposal in twenty twenty of assets?
Yes, we have a disposal committee, yes.
No, not the committee. Did you conduct any disposal in twenty twenty of assets? Did you sell assets, did you auction assets, did you sell, sell assets to staff or outsiders in twenty twenty?
Uh, I could not recall.
How about twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one, yes.
Please speak louder.
Twenty twenty-one, yes.
Give us the, the details of, of the disposal.
I think there was, uh, the truck, I couldn't remember very well whether it was in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one.
It, it doesn't matter, now, the truck?
Uh, yes, I inherited a truck, and the truck, we tried to put it on the road, but it was very difficult, then later we have to auction it.
And who, who, who bought it from the auction? Wa- wa- was it a staff?
No, no, not a staff, it was an outsider.
An outsider, what's the name?
The name should be in the files.
In the files, how much, the price?
I think it was three hundred and fifty thousand.
Right, that's a lot, lot of money there.
Yes.
So wh- 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 where is that money?
It was paid to the council.
It was what?
It was paid to the council.
The area council's account?
Yes.
Which account was that?
Well, I could not remember, unless I contacted the...
You will give us information after lunch about that particular disposal? But was there a disposal committee?
No, there was no disposal committee at that time.
Why was there no disposal committee?
Where was that?
They, they, um, the report, the review says that there was a disposal committee. Where, where you guys paying this, this, um, people from G P A to, to, to write nice, nice things about you?
No.
But why would they say that there was a disposal committee when there was none? They said that, um, the Basse area council has established the disposal committee as required by G P A Amendment Act twenty eighteen. Was there a disposal committee?
In twenty twenty, there was none, but after the twenty twenty report, twenty twenty-one.
I appreciate your honesty.
Yes.
I'm just trying to tell you that they are saying you have established a disposal committee when in real, in, in actual fact you have not.
No, we, currently we have, we have a disposal committee.
I'm thinking of twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, in twenty twenty, we didn't have it, but twenty twenty-one, we have this, uh, there is a time we, uh, appointed the contrast committee members, given them letters, and we also have a disposal committee.
You are very, being very interesting. Because I now tell you, the, the review is saying that there was a disposal committee, you now want to back that up?
No.
When you have already answered that there was none?
There was none in twenty twenty, but after their, their, after their recommendation, we were asked to, uh, make sure that...
Do you have in twenty twenty-one? You know, I will, I will ask you the names and the records, so you better, you better answer genuinely.
I could not recall, but I can, I can request for the members to snap their.
Was there, did you appoint a disposal committee in twenty twenty one, as far as you are concerned?
Well, I'm not very much sure, I could not recall the.
There was none.
They were, they were appointed later.
You never appointed a disposal committee? Was was the disposal committee a- appointed for that particular disposal?
No, there was.
Why was that, why would you dispose of cash assets without appointing a disposal committee?
It was, it was the contract committee that uh did uh.
The contracts committee was not even functional, because groups of friends, as far as I am concerned, who decided to execute the the functions of the area council in their own way, in their own world. No rules, no regulation, but let us assume there was even a contracts committee. They are not supposed to be the ones to to dispose of the the cashes assets, are they?
No.
The law requires that there must be a.
A disposal committee.
Disposal committee?
Yes.
So why did you not um have a disposal committee? I'm asking you, why, why?
We didn't have it, it was all right.
Why did you not create one?
It was later that we created one.
Later when?
After the compliance audit.
Do you have e- evidence of that?
Yes.
When can you pro- provide us with the evidence?
During break time, I'll call.
Now, um, still on the twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. How about, where are you keeping files of these procurement activities that were happening in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one? Where are you keeping records of it? Do you have records of the transactions that were happening?
The transactions, the the, like I said, is is the uh procurement officer who is assigned with the responsibility.
Not the assignment, not the person who is supposed to do it, was it done?
Yes.
There were no records, you know, just just when I think I will have to trust that you will say the right thing, you 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 come back again and.
That one is a surprise to me, when, when, when you said there are no records.
Why would it be a surprise to you?
Yeah, because the procurement officer was keeping records. When I contacted him, he said uh when the compliance audit came, when the national audit came, when the internal uh system audit came, because of the, you know, submission of uh records here and there, I missed my records.
I missed my records.
So I I cannot understand.
Li- listen.
Yes.
It says um that you, the 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 SPU should ensure all procurement activities are filed either in procurement method or monthly transactions as dictated in the Gambia Public Procurement Authority. But that you don't have a record of as a CEO.
No.
Louder, please.
No.
Good. Now, pre qualification and registration of suppliers um observation on page twenty. Now, I had told you that you are awarding contracts to individuals without following due process.
You are right.
I know.
Yes.
It is the, it is a findings.
And they are right.
Absolutely.
Yes.
It says, having gone through some records presented for reviewing, it was discovered that some contracts were awarded to suppliers who did not register with the authority at the time of the award.
Correct.
The first name is Fode Jalloh, who is Fode Jalloh?
Fode Jalloh was our council's messoner, I don't think we have contracted anything to him.
You don't think you have?
Fode Jalloh was our council's messoner, so we cannot contract anything to him.
You, he, you gave him one one thousand dollars to to dig a sucker away?
Maybe he received it on behalf of somebody, Fode is a council's messoner, so we don't give him contract.
It is the report, now Mohammed Mahmoud, who is that?
I couldn't remember these names.
Shilo Enterprise?
Shilo, I think we bought furniture from Shilo.
Catrich.
Okay.
Halal Company?
Halal, they deal in stationery and drinks.
Kode Danyo?
Kode Danyo is a Ketera.
You spent eighteen thousand dollars for this, for this particular, that transaction? And he, she is the sister of the, of the chair, of the chairman?
Yes.
How did you co- how did you know that he was, she is the sister of the, of the chairman?
I came to know that later.
How?
When I, as long, during my stay, my period stay in in Basay, I come to know that they are relatives.
How do you know?
Well, they are older than you, than you, then I later find out that they are, they are related.
And you, when you were giving her contracts, who was, who was making the decision, calling the shots as to that, the fact that she has to be giving the contracts without being registered? Whose decision was it, was it you?
Yes.
Why?
And later advised her to register with GPP and CD.
No, forget the advice, why?
Well.
This is the conflict of interest what we're talking about, you know why I'm, why I'm raising the issue?
No.
You don't know?
I don't know, yeah.
You, you see no problem with this?
There is a problem.
What is the problem?
Conflict of interest.
And so why did you do that, why did you allow yourself to to be drawn in that?
It was not proper.
Why did you allow yourself, were you convinced by the charge, the the chairman?
No.
No. Who convinced you?
Well, we, I I found her, she was, she was doing catering for the council and I, we also continued with her.
You came and you found that in fact, she is the sister of the chairman?
Yes.
And you knew it was wrong?
It was wrong.
And then you never stopped it? Were you afraid?
No.
Of the chairman?
No, not necessarily.
You must have been afraid of the chairman.
Not at all.
You must have been, because you, you took no step in 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 all this um wrong, wrong issues that were happening. You are afraid that if you terminate these contracts, it um, it may create to you a problem? Is that the case?
No, no, that was.
Then you, then you must have done it intentionally.
It was not intentionally.
It has to be one, it's either you were intentionally flouting the rules, disregarding all the possible conflict of interest, or you were just mindful not to step on the toes of the, of the chairman.
There are circumstances.
Which one?
There are circumstances where we.
Which one, first answer the question, what, 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 what is the issue?
It was not, I was never convinced by the chairman to do so.
I, now I have stopped.
Or do it intentionally.
No, it has to be one. You were either mindful of stepping on the wrong toes, or you just intentionally disregarded all the red lights. Which, which one should we go by?
I don't have an answer.
Is it the first one or the second one?
None of them.
So which one is it, so what, what, what is it then?
There is none of them.
Then what is it? What was the problem? How many contracts did, where were you giving the sister of the chair?
She was not the only person that we give contract, because uh normally. Yes.
Because she does not sell office furniture, does she?
No.
Exactly, she cannot be the, the only person, if she was selling office furniture, you would have also as well done the same thing. Were you having kickbacks?
Not at all.
So what, what is the problem with Usman Ture? What was the problem in Basay Area Council at the time? What must have been possibly going on with you, that you, you, you feel that the circumstances were so bad, but you couldn't do anything about it? Next level, who is next level?
Uh, it's a stationery shop.
Kebba Jata, who is Kebba Jata?
It's a mechanic.
Mechanic?
Yes.
It is a Jalloh?
Uh, it's a businessman.
Mahmoud Jalloh?
Also is a businessman.
You bought Bohol materials, but what are Bohol materials?
These are solar panels and uh.
These are?
Solar panels and water tanks.
So these people, do you know where, where, where they pay tax?
Yeah, we.
You what?
We once invited all of them.
Do you know whether they were paying tax?
No, no, I cannot ascertain that.
You don't know?
I don't know.
The implications are, non-registration with the authority is interpreted as a probable failure to pay tax, since GRA taxpayers is a prerequisite for GPA registration. So they did not register. They didn't pay the necessary dues that they were supposed to pay to bring funds, so what, what you were doing in essence is to deprive the government of the Gambia from, from um, from tax collection and also misusing the funds, the little funds that you have from the revenue.
We sensitized them to.
You what?
We sensitized them to.
Sensitize, you, you have, you have the role to sensitize them to do that?
To register with GPBA.
That, that is your role?
Not, not my role, but uh for, for so that whatever we are going to do with them.
You should have been a pastor, you should have been a pastor then, my friend.
But if you, if you go to Basay at that time.
No, you should.
Very few people are, very few, or maybe you will, you will not find uh businessmen at that time registered with GPBA.
If you are to give them contracts, you know they should register with the G, with GPBA.
So.
And the advice should not have been after you have awarded the contract, but before.
Before, yes.
When they declared their interest to benefit from public funds.
Yes.
But you never did that.
That was what was right.
You will give them contracts and now be advising them to do the right thing and still be giving them contracts again, because this Kode Danyo, all of these people have been doing um co- um supplies or contracts for the area council without being registered.
I want to believe a good number of them have registered afterwards.
Most of them did not register.
Okay.
Most of them failed to register. So it has been highlighted that it is a loss of revenue to the government of the Gambia, to, to, to the, to the Gambia people. Now, there are some um, some samples of, of, of procurement. But before that, were you engaged in the, the SPU, the, the procurement unit in relation to procurement?
Yes, yes.
In all procurement?
Yes.
Are you sure about that?
Whenever he is around.
So how about if he is around?
Uh, I consult you.
And then?
For advice.
Who signs the documents?
Well, I will sign my post on, Director Finance will sign his post on.
All right.
Yes.
Now, let's go for the twenty twenty two, unless there are questions, we just go for the twenty twenty two procurement. What is the constitution of the, of the members of the contracts committee? In twenty twenty two? Do you know?
The list I gave you.
Or same people?
Yes, same people, yes.
Now, the amount of procurement done in twenty twenty two is four hundred and ninety-two to procurement activities.
Okay.
There was no, they were all single source. And the value is three million nine hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred and forty dollars seventeen, but it was in twenty twenty two. Was that the actual and true amount of, of the value of, of the procurement?
I agree with that, yes.
You, you spent three mil, about four million dollars um in procurement in twenty twenty two?
Yes.
Why, why did you not, why did you um single source all of these transactions?
Well, it's not correct. It should have followed the due process.
So why you not follow the due process then? I want to understand why you failed to follow due process? Was there any disposal done in, in twenty twenty two?
I could not remember, yes.
You cannot remember?
Yes.
Do you, will you have records of that?
Uh, I have to find out.
Will you have records of that?
Let me know it, I'm during break time, I can find out.
So was there any, any, any plan, any procurement plan in twenty twenty two?
As these procurement plans were done by the procurement officer and submitted to the procurement uh unit, department.
Did you see it?
Yeah, he brought it to my office.
Do you have a copy?
Maybe during break, I can start, I can ask them to check for a copy for me.
All right, so please make, you can, you can, you, you give us a copy um when you have one.
Okay.
So for the list of the suppliers in twenty twenty two that you have dealt with, who did not qualify or did not register? You have one Mohammed Ahmed, do you know Mohammed Ahmed?
Yes.
Please speak louder.
Yes.
Who is he?
He's a Murtanian businessman.
How about um Jalloh, Jalloh El?
Yes, he deals with petrol.
Yai instant?
He deals with, deals with uh.
Ibrahim Adansu? Nopal dealer?
Yes.
Next level, stationary?
Yes.
It is a Jalloh?
Yes.
Ha- Habib Bah and Seni Jawara?
Yes.
So all these people, they did not register?
Yes.
And why do you, did you deal with them still?
Like I said, in, in, they should, they should register with GPBA, but uh the, most of the businessmen in Basay did not register with GPBA, and if you don't uh deal with them at that time, it means you have to come down to Kombo and uh get your goods. So we don't, we have no other alternative but to deal with them and advise them to register with GPBA.
So you, you, do you know Namea Travel ANC?
Yes, I know Namea Travel.
Who owns Namea Travel ANC?
No, I don't know, I know that it's, there is an airline that operates.
Please speak louder.
I know that there is an airline that operates and deals with air tickets.
In Basay?
No, 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 in Kombo.
In Kombo here?
Yes.
So um you have spent about hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I think, to, to purchase tickets?
Tickets, yeah.
Who was for who?
Uh, I could remember.
Who was traveling?
German, advise German travels.
To where?
To first, they went to the US.
To the US?
Yes.
And then?
Second, they went to Italy.
That's all?
I could remember, I also traveled to US and the internal auditor also traveled to Zambia. Those were the travels.
So how did you purchase this ticket? Because there were no evidence of contracts committee meetings?
No, there were no contracts committee meetings.
Yes.
And uh we didn't follow any.
Any process?
No, no process, yes.
Why, why was that?
The procurement officer was only informed, but uh that uh there was no due process followed.
Why was that? Same with Jalloh as well, hundred thousand dollars, um for fuel. No minutes of the contracts committee, the amount is above the threshold, and you don't know all of these things, and you followed no due process? As a CEO.
Yes.
Why is that?
It's not proper.
I know it's not proper.
Yes.
But what, why did you do it?
It's not correct.
Why did you do it is, is different from whether it is, it is correct or not? Why would you commit these funds, is it because the chairman was traveling?
No.
Is it because you were traveling?
No.
It wa- was it very urgent? Extremely urgent? You didn't know that, 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 that the chairman will travel or you will travel until the last minute?
No, we, no, we know that.
Until the eleventh hour?
No, it was not.
So why, why did you not follow process?
Most of these things are done on arrangements.
So you see now, before we now get into twenty twenty, um one system audit, you see why I kept on saying that in twenty twenty one, when you had Lamin Tuso in twenty 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 one, the problems did not only start from there, that he had found a broken system in Basay Area Council, which you were managing lightly with this, with the chairman. The system was broken, the rules were being flouted, total disregard of regulation, and so we also came and found it. Would that now be correct?
Yes.
So, and therefore, it was easy for him to do that which he was doing.
Yes.
And so you were helpless to correct the system because you yourself have flouted the rules as well. So it was difficult to bring him to, to order until it has reached the climax. So it was a matter of, let me invite the auditors, otherwise, um things may explode be, um before you. Please respond to that.
Yes, yes, that was right.
Now, let's go to the system audit on the, the one for twenty twenty one that you have called for. What prompted the system audit, let, let's start with that. Give us a background, a summary of what prompted this demo then?
Yes, uh, there were so many uh reports that were submitted.
Yes.
By one, the one, there was one report that was submitted by the internal auditors.
Yes.
And uh it was rejected by the general counsel.
When was this?
Uh, I think this was their first report, I think, if I can recall, in September?
Twenty?
Twenty twenty one.
Twenty twenty one. And what was the primary um issue regarding the, the internal, internal audit report?
Uh.
What was, what was, what, what, what was the cross of the matter?
Yeah, because collectors were coming, they were handing over physical cars to the Director of Finance.
Okay, this one?
And uh funds were not forthcoming, collections were, collectors would be in the field. Funds were not forthcoming, collections were, collectors would be in the field.
Yes.
Uh, will not see funds deposited in the council's account.
Okay.
So, but we don't know where exactly they are going.
Any other?
Yes, uh.
Any other?
The the use of uh G T Rs instead of using the machines.
So, so primarily, this were, the the complaints were against the Bureau of Finance Finance. In relation to his conduct.
Yes.
In Basay Area Council.
Yes.
Was the, was the situation al- alarming at the time that would want to 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 invite the system audit?
Yeah, because uh this uh conditions continues after the uh internal audit committee.
Yes.
There was tax force that was set.
Yes.
And they also came out with the same, the same uh report. Uh, the, there was another tax force that was also said, they also came out with the same uh report, but uh. There were no actions taken.
Why?
Because uh once that report was rejected, the the two other reports were presented, but they were not adopted. So, the way and the manner things were unfolding at that time, seeing that uh all those works have been done. Nothing is uh, nothing is happening, that was what pointed me to advise the general counsel that uh. If uh these reports have been presented and they are not been adopted, uh, the way the things are unfolding. It's going to, it's going to go, it's going to get out of hand, so it is very, very paramount at this point in time. That we invite external auditors to come.
But, but, but you knew when some of these complaints were being brought to you? And and then um there there were reports that effect, some of those complaints were not new to you at the time?
Oh, they were not new to me.
Yes, you.
I detected them and I brought them forward.
You brought them forward?
Yes.
When? Not in writing, certainly.
No, there was uh.
Do you have any?
Writing to the.
Yes, in twenty twenty-one. Did you really formally bring these issues up yourself? Apart from informal discussions?
Writing to the chairman of the Establement Committee, yes.
In twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
When did you started? When this problem started?
The problem started in twenty twenty-one, yes.
What did you write about? Wha- what did you tell them? Was it not the issue regarding the the the, were you not reporting the collectors um giving money to the Bureau of Finance?
Yes.
But did you write about Bureau of Finance, did you complain about him?
I did not.
That that is my point.
Yes.
The idea is, this information was was with you at the time.
Because I want them to investigate, this is an allegation.
Did you tell them to investigate?
That was the issue of, that was the purpose of the.
Did you tell them to investigate?
That was, yes, the can, that was the purpose of the council's internal audit to investigate.
To investigate who?
Uh, the reason, the the money that was brought by the collectors.
You to investigate the the collectors giving money to the Bureau of Finance?
Yes.
The 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 primary complaint was against the the collectors, not not the Bureau of Finance?
Yes.
And why would that be the case?
Because the collectors, they know they should not bring money to the council.
And the Bureau of Finance also knows?
He knows.
That they should not get money from the collectors?
Yes.
So why was, why did you not complain about him?
No, I like the complaint to them that collectors.
You never complained about him, did you?
No, I never.
Yeah, so why?
Because at that time, he was not found uh one, he was, he was not, he hasn't been proven beyond all reasonable that collecting money from these collectors. This is why I asked the uh internal audit unit to to investigate.
But you.
And when they investigate, they found him wanting.
No, but there's an allegation, you confronted some of the collectors, and they told you they gave money to the Bureau of Finance. They should not query Bureau of Finance Finance based on those allegations. You would have queried him, you would have wrote, wrote to him directly. And query him regarding the fact that these are the allegations, let him respond.
You are right, but that was not done.
Was that also intentional?
No, it was not.
Why was it difficult to do that?
It was not difficult, this is why I I just want uh. I just want a neutral body to do the investigation and uh.
Just want what?
A neutral body, that is the audit, the council internal audit.
Now, um, we have discussed the issue of the inactive committees.
Yes.
The lack of development activities in twenty twenty-two in the budget, we had already discussed that, is that not the case?
Yes.
The councils in twenty twenty-two, it was highlighted that they did not submit development projects by um. To 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 the, to the area council, was that true?
The words.
That during the review of the budgetary process, we noticed that some work counselors failed to submit any development projects from their respective. Works for twenty twenty-three budget.
Yes, at that time, because we told them that if they don't submit it, that they they will not be part of the uh the budget.
Do you know the reason?
Yeah, because they said uh uh there were no developments. Uh, they have been submitting, so there were no, they are, they have not been benefiting, so that was their reason.
So they will submit their their project proposals without benefiting anything from the area council?
That was why they.
And over time, they feel they were tired and therefore there was no need to do that?
Yes.
Was that, was that, was that true?
That was true, yes.
That was true?
Yes.
I I mean, it was true, the the fact that they would submit over the years and then you did not um. The general council wouldn't focus on 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 them.
Yeah, because we cannot.
Development.
Developments cannot, we cannot uh take development to all their awards at the same time.
Yes.
It was gradual.
That's true, but you don't even focus on the, on on development at all in in the area council?
No, we are focused on.
Sixty percent of the revenue should be on development, that is never the case.
Yes, this.
Is that the case?
Yeah, that is the case.
Sixty percent, do you spend sixty percent of the of the revenue on development?
Not, not all the time.
Never, you have already answered these questions.
Yes.
That was, that you have never achieved that sixty percent?
But at least, no, we have never achieved the sixty percent.
You spend, you spend in your own individual offices way more than what you spend on 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 development, is that not true?
This is true.
So, there is no way you will even ha- achieve twenty percent of development in Basay Area Council. So if you can spend four million, five million in your individual offices, there is no reason why you would not be able to. Um, give priority to 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 their proposals when they come. I am not saying what they did was right, but they are elected for every year for them to make sure that they submit these proposals.
Yes.
And argue their, 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 their pri- pri- priorities right, so that they will have benefit from the area council.
I quite agree with you, yes.
That is separate, but the idea is, they are saying, we have been doing that all these these previous years. And you never prioritize our words, and these words, are they, are they not paying revenue?
They are paying.
Are you not collecting revenue from these people?
Yes, we are.
Why would you prioritize them? Why would you prioritize your office? Why would your office be more important, buying the car for the chairman, more important than the development of these words?
Like I said, we cannot take development to all the words, so we.
But, 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 but you can buy new new cars for for the chairman?
No, because if you look at.
And rent, and rent compounds in in Abuko?
If you look at the the cost of one footbridge, that that cost cannot come from one word.
You spend according to your earnings, you have to be genuine. The idea is, if at all, one does is what, what costs you sixty percent of the revenue, so collected. Let it be spent on development.
Yeah, but.
You are spending monies in areas that that there is no need to spend money on. You rented houses for and paid every year for the, for the chairman in Abuko, is that not true?
Yes, it's true.
You are renting um apartments in Basay, paid every mo- every year. Whilst you know fully well, you have, you've had a premises that you can do a little bit, and then your staff will stay in.
Yes.
So you are not prior, you are renovating your own offices?
Yes.
Is that not correct?
Yes.
And so the people that you collect revenue from, there are no, no, no developments, they are totally disregarded.
No, they have, they have developments.
Don't tell me they have developments.
They have developments, I. They can be, uh, they are evident.
Yes, Mister Ture.
Yes.
Um, um, I believe you, you know it better than we do. That the revenue you collect, sixty percent of that revenue.
Yes.
ought to have gone into.
Developer.
Developing the the council itself and the various wards.
Yes.
That are within the council.
Yes.
And my take from the the lawyer is that uh you have misplaced priorities. Because if you look at your finances, um, how would you justify buying a car? Not taking into consideration, if you apportion the 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 revenue that you collect? Would that have given you the possibility of buying that car?
No.
So, but that is what he is asking.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
On page twenty-four.
Yes.
There were, um, there was a period where in there was application made in relation to stalls that that were, that were built newly, the market.
Yes.
But then, the the finding is that. Monies were collected for um application fees in relation to um the allocation of these stalls. The amount is five hundred, five hundred, hundred dollarses from each applicant.
Yes, for each applicant, yes.
Please speak louder.
Yes, for each applicant, five hundred.
Each applicant?
Yes.
And at some point, the responsibility of the allocation was transferred to the governor's um uh office, is that true?
Yes.
So what did you do with the people that already paid?
Some of them were allocated at the governor's office, so.
The people that already paid to your office?
The people who have paid to our office.
Yes.
Yes, because they were, most of them were victims, so they were.
They were?
They are victims.
And then?
And they were allocated from the governor's office, but there are still a good number of them who are not yet allocated. So, we told them, they are, they they can come for their money, but they have not yet come for their money.
You told them, how did you tell them? Who, who will you tell?
At the time of the.
Who will you, who will you tell them to come for their money and they will come for their money?
At the time of their interview, we told them that if whether you have, if you have it, then it's okay, if you don't have it, your money is refunded.
Don't you ha- have their contact numbers?
Yeah, we have their contact.
Why won't you call them?
Uh, we didn't call them, we're waiting for them to come and request.
Why did you not call them?
No, we're waiting for them to come and request.
You had a responsibility, you no longer, no longer have the responsibility, all the people you have got their money from, you have to give them back.
Yeah, you are right.
Did you do that?
We should give them back their money.
Was that done?
No, it was not done.
Why was it not done?
No, we were waiting for them to come and request.
Don't wait for them, you have a responsibility, you have their numbers. You called, you called and informed them.
Yeah, we should have done that, but we didn't do that, we were waiting for them to come and collect their monies.
On page twenty-eight, we have discussed this issue of of subvention, but I only have one or two, two questions regarding that.
Okay.
What is this money for? When you receive subvention, what what is, is it meant for?
It was a conditional grant.
For?
For the rebuilding of the prices in market.
For what?
For the.
Development?
Of the, yes, for development, yes.
The money is supposed to be spent on?
Development.
Good, now, immediately, the money hit your account, you had signed a cheque of one point three million dollars, is that correct? In the name of Nabakulvali.
Yes, it's correct.
Why would you do that?
Because uh at that time, we have issues of salaries.
The money is not for salary?
It's not for salary, yes.
So why, why would you sign that cheque?
Yeah, because we are pressed at that time.
The money was not for salary still?
Yeah, we believe that uh if we pay for salaries, if we uh surrender our collections, we'll be able to.
Did you pay for for salaries in twenty nineteen? Were you having problems for, with 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 respect to salaries?
Whether?
Were you having problems in relation to salaries in twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen, I didn't have.
When did your problem start in relation to salary?
Uh, I think it started in twenty twenty-one.
Why do you think the problems started in twenty twenty-one?
Uh.
Because, because of your friend Lamisso?
Partly, and the other one is because of the 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 liabilities.
The liability? That's you and your friend Lamisso? If you've take, taken loans, you are binding the council unlawfully, without you had no authority at the time, in the manner in which you did it. And yet still you were taking loans, and you were taking loans because someone was squandering the funds of of the area council, is that not true? Is that not true?
Yes.
So, when you, when this cheque was signed, um, in um one point three million? And so, was it spent on salaries?
Uh, part of it was spent on salaries.
Please speak louder.
Part of it was spent on salaries.
And then the 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 other part?
Uh, was for the payment of our liabilities.
The what?
The payment of our liability.
You paid liabilities from from the sub- subvention, from from the grant?
Yes.
Which bank?
The Supersonics.
Supersonics?
Yes.
Do you have the details of 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 this payment?
No, Nabak has, Nabak Krubal has.
Nabak has this?
Yes.
Now, three hundred thousand dollars is still not accounted for, because it says one point three million was withdrawn. Now, interviewed with Nabak Krubal, he said that, he said that he claimed eight hundred dollars was deposited to Vista Bank, was that true?
Vista Bank, yes.
Did you order him to do that?
Because it was, that was, that is what is meant for salaries at that time.
For salaries?
Yes.
Three hundred thousand was also deposited to Supersonics?
He was supposed to deposit that to Supersonics.
Why?
Uh, that, uh, for the, to the uh payment of our liabilities with Supersonics.
Hundred, hundred thousand dollars to you?
Yes.
And the other hundred thousand dollars is to um for the finance director?
Yes.
For your own individual um benefit?
Yes.
But the, but the finance, you had already admitted that it was wrong, you took the monies from from council, and you were supposed to do that.
Yes.
But the finance also said this five thousand dollars is because he had pre-financed the the council.
No.
Know what?
It's, that is, that is not a correct statement.
That's not correct?
Yes, and even after the uh the hundred thousand, according to Nabak, he has given him another hundred and fifty thousand.
But then, the amount of money that Nabak deposited to Supersonics?
Yes.
Was deposited before the withdrawal?
This is what the auditors have detected, so which, which mean Nabak has a question to answer on that.
You have a question to answer as overall boss?
Yeah, because we.
Nabak's responsibility, we have already dealt with, we are not absorbing Nabak Krubal from any fraudulent activity. If he is is found to be responsible.
Yeah, because he was.
Remind you, you are here as a C E O.
Yes, and he was advised to deposit this money to the Supersonics.
You will check, you will have to confirm.
Yes, normally when he does that, uh, he will bring the the deposit slip, and I look at it and confirm.
No, but the deposit was done before the withdrawal.
Yeah.
It was done for the, so the money that was, you know, I keep on saying all the time, the the money that was deposited, that was deposited was not the same money that was withdrawn. Because in simple sense, dates do not correspond.
Yeah, the likelihood that uh what we have said is true is correct.
What?
I said the likelihood that the money that was deposited.
Don't you have alerts from Supersonics?
Uh, Supersonics, yes, I have alerts.
So would you, would, would you not know if?
The alerts, the alerts came not long ago, in twenty twenty-two.
In twenty?
Twenty twenty-two.
So if, if, if you had done bank reconciliation, would you have, would you not have known?
Will, will, I would have known it.
So you don't do the bank reconciliation? So how would you know how this money is being spent?
Yeah.
And why would it not be suspicious, suspicious that you are part of the the program as well?
No.
Know what? You had shared the money.
It's not possible.
But you had right out dollarses from from the money.
Yeah, but that was meant for, for, for me to pay uh council's liability.
In the course, it was meant for.
And as soon as Nabak was able to produce uh any document on that, I refunded him the money.
I know.
Yeah, because all along, I was, I was, I was uh with the hope that Nabak has repaired this money on behalf of the council. But when the auditors uh.
You, that is not correct.
Okay.
You.
But as soon as I know that the the money given to me was all spent on the council's interest, I refunded it.
We had discussions earlier.
Yes.
This is why I'm bringing, bringing up the issue of the the high standards that you had taken from council, council's subvention.
Hmm.
Is by mayor, by the fact that you have done that, it's not about the the amount, it's not about hundred thousand out of, out of two million. That it may be insignificant, that's not the point, the point is if you can do that. What may, will make you us believe that you cannot benefit from this, this, the other, the other, the other unaccounted funds?
No.
But what would make us believe that?
Because this one was, when uh the whole thing started, when uh this subvention was spread.
The what?
When the sub- subvention was spread. Uh Suso came to me and said the subvention is paid.
Yes.
And this is how we do it in Brikama, I said, no, we cannot do it like that, because we have.
How how did he tell, how did he tell you it was done in Brikama?
He came to my office and he told me.
Yes, how? How would he tell you?
That normally when this comes, this is how they do it.
How?
They 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 share it. I told him that that will not happen here, I have a liability, uh where and we have to pay salaries, and uh uh that's it, Mister, the late fool. He's always, he's always uh asking us about his money.
You know why I'm laughing?
Yes.
It's 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 important you tell us this, but then we can't help but to laugh, because it is extremely serious, at some point when things become unimaginable.
And and they have evidence to these people.
Yes.
Yes, and there are evidence, he didn't tell, told me alone.
Yes.
He went to other people and told them that uh this CEO, he doesn't want to have anything, and he don't want anybody to have anything. Yes?
Now, let's roll the tape.
Yes, just hang on, yes, uh Mister, um 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 we 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 commend you for stating the facts as they are.
Yes.
Because um it is helpful for us to understand.
Yes.
Because um I I don't think as public servants, we should, as public servants, you.
Yes.
When I say public servants, I'm referring to you.
Yes.
Um should not be, should not be um um manipulated.
Yes.
By public opinion.
Yes.
Because you could only accept to be manipulated by public opinion if the public opinion is right.
Yes.
Am I not correct?
You are right.
Where you feel the public opinion is not correct, you should be guided by the laws.
Yes.
The regulations.
So.
That dictate what you are supposed to do.
Yes.
And the fact that um people have allegiances, have have that not also impacted in your actions, even though you were participating, but you knew it was wrong?
Yes.
Yes, let him continue explaining that portion, thank you.
Yes. Yes, and you will tell people that this man, he don't want to have, and he don't want, he doesn't want it, and he don't want anybody to have anything. So that many a times, I'll be hearing such such things like that. And the 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 comment that he made in my office that when such things come, the subvention, we share it, and that we 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 go and look for it, I told him that, no, that will not happen here, we have not been doing that. We have not been doing that, here, when it comes, we 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 do it for the purpose. So and currently, we have salaries to pay, and we have our liability with uh Supersonics, and uh Mister Gomez has also been following me about his debt, so those are the things I will consider. Then the rest, we can do that for development.
So uh as far as he is concerned, in.
Yes.
When he was in Brikama.
Yes.
The the money from from the government for subvention, that that was supposed to be spent on development, you share it at the top management.
That's what he told me.
And so he wants to bring the same culture?
The same culture in Busse.
In Busse area council?
Yes.
And he went around to to, when he couldn't convince you, he went around to tell people?
Yes.
But then, then would should that not be the more the more reason why you should have kept track of where where and how the money is being spent?
Yes, all those things later inform me that I have to be very careful with him.
No, not not even the the future um the future interactions you have with him.
Yes.
But apparently, that that this same two million dollarses, here you hear, here you have a man who tells you that this particular money should be should be shared.
Yes.
And you differ with that with that opinion.
Yes.
But he had given himself hundred thousand dollarses, and you were aware of that. What did he tell you that that money was for?
He said uh for for the hundred thousand that that Naba Jefi, that one comes to me uh as uh.
As what? Surprise?
He said, no, he said he's going to, he has he has a liability that he need to settle.
And then you allowed that?
That he's going to refund it back.
You allowed that?
Yes, I allowed that.
So you allowed him to spend the money, the same way he had told you that that money should be spent in in becoming area council, that how it was spent?
But not the way he wanted us to do it.
One currency?
Yes, you are right.
Even one currency, if you if you take it from the from the coffers, it matters.
You are right.
So what?
I quite agree with you.
It appears as if to you, the gravity of the actions of the uh whosoever it does with with the public funds depends on the amount of the money?
No, no.
So it's only a corrupt practice when it is, let's say, a a million dollars?
No, even a boot.
Even a boot, so that's how we should see it?
It matters.
Yes.
Yes.
So now, I am saying.
Yes.
That this particular money, what he had told you, he end up achieving that, because he took hundred thousand dollarses, and you said nothing, and you sent the cheque.
Yes.
And three hundred dollars was given to Naba, which was never accounted for, because you never had an alert, you never had bank reconciliation, the money was never deposited, and where did the money go to?
Now, Mister Ture, when um um the DOF, that is Director of Finance.
Yes.
Said he had some liabilities. At that point, did it not ring a bell that you are not a bank that is supposed to give him money to go and settle his loan?
Yes.
And even whereas you could have accommodated him in paying back his loan, being a staff of the council, um were you not have, were you not supposed to have followed due process to give him the money?
We should have followed the due process, we should have applied for it right, then we documented.
And he did not do that?
He did not do that, yes.
So he was acting with absolute discretion and disregard for how public funds could be used judiciously.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, aside from the issue regarding the subvention.
Yes.
In fact, was that how this this the 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 monies that were received are are subvention, did you receive subvention in twenty twenty two?
Yes.
How was it shared? Was it was it also shared like this as well?
No, it was not.
That one you refused?
No, that's twenty twenty two. I think this one was.
Twenty twenty one?
Twenty twenty one, yes.
Yes, December twenty twenty one.
Yes.
Now, the loans, on page twenty nine, which of the loans did you take without approval from the the minute, from the um the the general council?
It was the seven million.
Only the seven million?
Yes.
From which bank?
From different banks.
From 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 different, so you took loans um in um different periods?
These amounts were accumulated, they are not like we took.
I know, I know, I I I can see it's from since twenty twenty.
Yes.
So why would you take loans from banks without without approval? Who make decisions? Yourself?
Yes, and and the and the Director of Finance.
And then?
When there is need.
And and who else again?
When there is need for.
Who else again?
Yeah, I informed the chairman.
Yourself, the chairman, and Director of Finance?
Yes, I will inform him that we.
Yourself, the chairman, the Director of Finance?
Want to pay salaries, but the salaries we are.
Listen, let's first have.
I've answered your question, I said yes.
You have not answered my question.
Sorry, Mister.
Okay.
Sorry, Mister Ture, listen to each other so that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You have not answered my que- you know, I had told you the last time.
Yes.
No, that's 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 all right, I don't take offense to that, I am telling you.
Yes.
You had, I told you the last time that whenever you have to mention the chairman, it will take you about an extra five, ten minutes before you will actually mention the chairman.
Not necessarily.
I am now putting it to your attention again, for the last time.
Not necessarily.
You will end up doing it, but you have to really dodge around.
No.
You do that. When we ask by the quarters committee, you have to dive around until you until you have to agree. Now again, the loans, who was taking the decision, the guy that had taken loans without the approval of the general council?
Myself and Director of Finance will discuss it, and I'll go and inform the chairman that we want to pay the.
If the chairman did not agree, would you take the loan?
No, we will not.
So how many of you are making the decision?
Three of us.
And and who are these people?
Myself, the chairman, and Director of Finance.
And who was the chairman at the time?
Honorable Fordit Angel.
Who was the the Director of Finance?
I'm in Suzo.
So it's simple, then we answer the question and we move on.
Okay.
Do you understand that?
Yes, I understand.
So you take these loans, the three of you, you decide that you will take loans unlawfully, illegally, millions of of the of the dollarses?
In the interest of the council.
Show me the interest.
Salaries.
With salaries? Where is the record? Where is the record? Where is the record you have put these monies into salaries?
Normally, when collections are done, they are not.
Put it aside, put it aside, the cloud of the rules, let's just forget for once that you didn't follow any rule. Now, where is the evidence that you have put these monies into salaries?
We didn't follow any rule, that is correct.
Now, just put it aside.
Yes.
That is already um a proven fact, you 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 won't deny it, it's already established. But now, where is the evidence that the money is being put on salaries?
The salary, the evidence that salaries are paid.
No, but salaries, when salaries are paid, we assume they are paid lawfully and legally, we assume they are paid from the coffers of of the area council, you will assume they are paid from revenue collected.
No, this long, these short term loans, when we took them, you know, before the end of the following month, they are they are they are all repaid from.
I am saying, because you don't follow due process, how would we know that?
I quite agree with you, we didn't follow the due process, and you are right.
No, I, that would be a a a a foundation question, we've already agreed on that, but I'm telling you.
Yes.
Because you don't follow due process, the monies that you have illegally obtained, about seven million dollars or more, how can you establish that you pay, you use that money for salary?
The salaries are paid.
Yes, but they are supposed to be paid. The salary is supposed to be paid.
Yes.
From the revenue that you collect.
Yeah, the same thing, because when we take these short short term loans, they are recovered by the revenue that is collected.
There was no loan taken. As far as I am concerned, I'm I'm now showing you that there was no loan taken.
Yeah, because we don't follow the due process.
Yes.
Yes, you are.
As far as we are concerned, council did not take loan, you, the chairman, and the Director of Finance decided to take money in the name of the council.
Yes.
Yes, but the monies that you have taken cannot miss bind, um cannot bind the council. No, it it didn't follow due process.
You are right.
So you can't go and do some illegal actions and say, we have done it in the name of the council, the council should should take responsibility. So if you pay salaries, we'll assume that you have paid salaries from revenues.
Yeah, that is why we pay salaries from.
Yeah, we we don't, we want to know, and I want to believe you, and I want to agree with you. But show us the evidence that the money that you have taken from the bank is the money that you have paid salaries from. Otherwise, you will be responsible, you, yourself, the chairman, and the and the finance director. Why would even, why would you even take the risk, um Mister CEO? I'm not sure, I am calling you Mister CEO, why would you even take take the risk of 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 taking loans loans unlawfully, why?
Because these things came as emergencies, looking at the accounts, realize that the account, what is in the accounts cannot pay for the salaries.
Why 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 would you, why was it difficult to go and to um to discuss this at the at the at the level of the general council?
Yeah, we should have discussed it at the general council.
What?
I said we should have discussed it at the.
No, why was it difficult to do that?
Well, it was not difficult.
No, but in some instances, you do that.
It happens at a time when we cannot just call an emergency general council meeting.
In twenty twenty one, you took ten ten million from Supersonics?
That was, those ones were based on the the power of attorney that they have.
Ten million from Supersonics?
Yes.
You had general council um approval?
Yes.
Is that not true?
Yes.
What was the money for? Such a salaries?
No, no, that was for the projects.
For for the for for projects?
For the projects, yes.